Absolutely.
I'll go find, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And if not, I'll just talk about something else. I'm memoing these real quick. Don't worry.
Mm-hmm.
I enjoy your talk to the athlete.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just time. You.
Do we have Donna's husband yet?
Yes.
There we go. All right. Right on time, everyone. Unbelievable.
Cameron's parents still aren't here. Just doesn't play out.
We'll go superintendent.
I'll do superintendent.
Are we good to start? Okay.
Your family.
Good evening. Welcome to the March twenty-third Public Work Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get to our special guest, we want to make sure that everyone's here for that. I just want to go over some of the great things that have happened over the last two weeks. Number one, I went to all of the district-level concerts, all of them, and I was blown away over the last two weeks to see the creativity and talent of our students and, of course, the dedication of our faculty and Dr. Zuhar. In addition to thanking the Board of Ed for their support, the principals, and, of course, Dr. Z, I would like to thank the sponsors of the arts for our music teachers and our music teachers as well, and I'm going to name them all. We have a lot. Jessica Herman, Raphael Yenney, Cody Ying, Katie Mark, Brendan Bierstoffer, Kristen Bach, Keith Heim, Andrew Colleen, Barry Lebron, Julia Bremer, Kim Corona, Anna Elias, Mary Anne Fiermonte, Kirsten Ruvalo, Doreen Friling, and Brianna Brickman. They really did a great job. The kids came together. They really had like two or three rehearsals at most as a collective group, and they did a great job, so thank you very much for that. Now I will turn. It looks like we are ready to go, so we will turn to our special guests because I'm sure they have better places to be. So I would like to introduce Dr. Walsh to come up and introduce our special guests. You may applaud for him. He's deserved it.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, and thank you to Central Administration and Board of Education for inviting me tonight. I have the pleasure of speaking about three exceptional students that we have at Southside High School. Their tremendous academic achievements speak for themselves, but the thing that impresses me the most, and I said this to Mr. Murphy earlier today, is that these are three of the best kids you'll ever come across, and that just makes it so much more encouraging and rewarding to present them to you all tonight, and we're very proud of them. So we had a special year at Southside High School as it relates to the valedictorian and salutatorian. We had two students who achieved so highly that we couldn't even decipher between the two of them, and it really was a special year, so I'm going to speak a little bit about both of them, and I want them to be recognized tonight for all that they've accomplished. So first student is Cameron Coletti. Cameron welcomes academic challenges and has demonstrated this fervently, working towards an IB diploma. Not surprisingly, Cameron handles this undertaking with perseverance, effort, and enthusiasm. She excels in all academic areas, including IB Business Management, IB Chemistry, IB French. As a talented athlete, Cameron has been a valuable member of the varsity winter track, spring track, and cross-country teams. She is captain of cross-country this year, and as the vice president of the Backpack Foundation Club, Cameron leads her peers with collecting school supplies and donating them to children in need. She is an active member of our DECA club and participated in the state qualifiers. As a volunteer for Bethany's Buddies, she provides childcare and homework assistance to the children involved in the program. She also served as the secretary for her grade for three years. Cameron is an outstanding person and has left a mark on Southside High School. All that she has accomplished, both academically and personally, comes secondary to the fact that she is an exceptional young woman with integrity and a great strength of character. Congratulations to Cameron Coletti, valedictorian for Southside High School. I'd also like to congratulate our other valedictorian for Southside High School, class of 2023, Ms. Samantha Stein. Samantha Stein has mastered the difficult art of humility. Although her accomplishments are impressive, she never calls attention to herself. Instead, she gives herself to others and achieves her goals with a tenacious focus, determination, and poise. As an international baccalaureate diploma candidate, Sam has challenged herself in some of the most difficult classes offered and has always found success. In classes like IB Management, IB Spanish, AP Calculus BC, Sam stands out as a leader due to her insightful answers and thought-provoking questions. Sam has received national and state recognition for her academic achievement through her induction into the math, science, Spanish, TRIEM, and National Honor Societies. Outside of the classroom, Sam is the president of DECA, where she was awarded first place in the Career Development Project State Competition, which helped her qualify for the national competition. She's also a four-year member of the track, cross-country, and softball teams, where she is a great competitor and a great friend to others on the team. She volunteers for best buddies and has served as both the secretary and treasurer for the Backpack Foundations Club. She earned honorable mention recognition at the prestigious Toshiba Explorer Vision Science Fair for her project on water desalination. Sam is also a member of our Wind Ensemble Group and serves as a peer leader in our Sources of Strength Program. Outside of school, she serves as the vice president of programming for her chapter of BBYO, where she spends many hours each week engaging with other teens and connecting with her religion. She also works as a teacher assistant in a first-grade classroom at a local Hebrew school. It's amazing that Sam has any time for herself, but she's always calm, collected, and confident, and we are extremely proud of Sam for all of her amazing accomplishments. Congratulations, Sam. The third student I'd like to mention tonight was recognized as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. So National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in nineteen fifty-five. Approximately one and a half million high school students enter this program each year. We are so proud of Matthew Downing for being named a high school National Merit semifinalist. Finalist, excuse me. Each year, National Merit recognizes only fifteen thousand high school students nationwide for this prestigious honor, based on their achievement on the PSAT and other school-related activities and academics. Being named a finalist is a true honor, and we're so proud of you, Matt. The combination of Matthew's academic strength and his distinctive personality make him an undeniable asset to our student body. He has a great appetite for learning and welcomes new challenges with fervor. He has enormous potential for a very successful future. Maintaining a stellar grade point average through all of his years in high school, his transcript is nothing less than impressive. As a full IB diploma candidate, Matthew excels in IB Chemistry, IB Physics, AP Calculus. As impressive as his academic record may be, it is his activity resume that shows another side of his personality and his interests. He serves as the secretary of the French Club, an officer of the Board Games Club, and president of the Chess Club. In all three of these roles, he's able to exercise his leadership skills and combine them with his passion and interest in those areas. Matthew embraces life and is a tireless worker. His curiosity of the world, resilience, and fierce independence will continue to serve him well in college and beyond. Congratulations to Matthew Downing for being named a National Merit finalist. Gavin, we'd like to have the students come up for a photo.
Would love, but just before we do the photo, I just want to say how proud we are of all of you. Number one, you are a credit to our school, our district, and our community. That's number one. Number two, please make sure that you thank your parents and your family for all the support that they have given you over the years, whether it was inspiration, whether it was driving to the thousands of activities I just talked about, or whether it was your support in the stands or on the fields or in the classroom, you know, your parents also gave you that seed that learning is so important. So please make sure that you have that and you take that time to do that as well, and again, you really, like a cyclone, make us so proud. Thank you very much. Let's go take a nice picture and then get them off on to their next activity.
You want to go back there?
Sure.
Go back there.
Take that sign down, honey.
How nice.
Yes, it is totally permissible. Go take them out to dinner or something, wherever they need to go to next.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Congratulations again.
Now, that's a good way to start a meeting. Love it. Love it, love it, love it.
Agreed.
Okay, so going back, we also had this week, we had a parent university for our elementary parents. Dr. Moriarty and the elementary principals partnered with some of our amazing staff to put on the elementary parent university this past Tuesday evening. The feedback we have received has been really, really positive. We held workshops on the science of reading, robotics, coding, differentiation, the transition from fifth grade to middle school, and elementary mathematics. Kudos to all of the collaborative effort, and we look forward to the secondary parent university, which will be held on April twenty-sixth. Look for more info to come. Dr. Moriarty, you just want to tell some people when the emails are coming out?
So the email for our interest to see what topics that we would like to hear about as the community will be going out tomorrow morning, which will then be followed up with a very quick registration process the following week, and then after that, everybody will receive information about what they're doing and where they're going. And also on our website is the information about the elementary parent U and all of the different presentations that were present, so if anybody wasn't able to come, they're there with my contact information, so if anybody wants more information, they're also able to contact me at any time.
Thank you, Dr. Moriarty. Also on Tuesday, Tuesday was very busy, we kicked off the spring athletic season with an informational meeting for our spring athletes, coaches, and parents. The goal of this meeting was reinforcing a positive climate around our athletic community. We discussed our expectations for coaches, athletes, and parents. The feedback again was very positive. We are so proud and excited for this season because our athletes are driven, our coaches will be able to communicate plans for each athlete to improve and get better, and our parents support the growth and development of our programs. Thank you to Ms. Rossetto, the coaches, and Dr. Walsh for their support, and thank you to all of our parents, boosters, and athletes that attended the event. Thank you very much. On some other information, we had the Clean Water Grant Award winner was also at Southside High School. We are so proud of Marina Ayanu, a sophomore enrolled in Mr. Russo's Science Research Class, who was chosen as a winner of the twenty-twenty-three Long Island Water Quality Challenge, which is a science, technology, and engineering mathematics competition presented by the Long Island Regional Planning Council. Ms. Ayanu earned an official certificate of outstanding achievement and for her school earned a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant. Marina competed as the only solo competitor in the whole contest, and she faced off against full teams of people in grades nine through twelve from other schools around Long Island. She specifically focused on how to develop a strategy to reduce nitrate and phosphate pollution. I won't get into the specifics because I'm going to mispronounce it, in order to protect Long Island's water resources. A twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant will be awarded to Southside High School to be used exclusively toward the implementation of her planned research for next year. We are super proud of Marina. Well done. We will be inviting her to an upcoming board meeting so that we can recognize her as well. On another note, course request updates at both the high school and middle school will be going out Monday, excuse me, Friday or Monday of either Friday tomorrow or Monday of this week. We are sending out the course requests that our children, our students have made that list all the new courses as well that was approved by the board, so that parents can review the schedules with their child and then contact their child's guidance counselor if they want to make any changes. So those letters are going out Friday for the high school, Monday for the middle school. Now we have, we start to get into spring with a tremendous amount of upcoming events. Number one, the Ed Foundation Gala is next Saturday, April first, at Gatsby's of Jones Beach. I'm enthusiastically looking forward to going to my first gala, and once again, thank the Ed Foundation in advance for all of the support for our students here in Rockville Center. The COVID Variety Show is next week as well. That'll be on March thirtieth in the middle school auditorium. Dr. Moriarty and I are somehow included in the festivities. I'm not really sure how. We were voluntold by Mr. Raymar. We're not exactly sure how we're involved, but if Mr. Raymar's involved, it's somewhat of a risky proposition. We also have Hewitt Kids Night Out is next Friday, three thirty-one. We have Watson K., kindergarten and first grade pajama bedtime story is April third, and our next board meeting is Tuesday, April fourth. So again, we have a Tuesday board meeting for the next, for our next board meeting, which will be a work session, and we had an update from the Wellness Committee. Dr. Dewey is coming to Rockville Center next Tuesday. Ms. Love, would you please give us a little bit of information on that?
Sure. I'll give an overview from our Wellness Committee meeting yesterday, so our Wellness Committee is comprised of staff, PTA members, and Board of Ed member, Mrs. Hackett. We met yesterday. Items on the agenda included the following: Wellness Minutes, so please be on the watch for the final installments of our educational videos, which will cover the importance of making connections. That video will be starring Dr. Vera Fjor, Northwell Pediatric Psychiatrist, as well as a series featuring transition for our students who will be transitioning from elementary, middle, or high school to their next academic experience, so those videos will be coming out this spring. Save the date, the Wellness Walk will be held on May thirteenth from ten AM to twelve PM at the Southside Middle School. There are a wide variety of enjoyable activities planned, from therapeutic arts and crafts to mindfulness and yoga to an exciting color run. So please keep an eye out on your email, as an invitational flyer will be sent to all families next week. Thank you to Ms. Kabas and Ms. Brenner, our elementary guidance counselors, for working with Mrs. Ramsey and I on this very special event. They've put so much work into it. Dr. Dewey. Dr. Dewey, neuroscientist and research professor, will be featured at the Southside High School on March twenty-eighth at seven thirty PM. Dr. Dewey will be delivering a presentation entitled "The Effects of Substance Abuse on the Adolescent Brain." This event is for parents. It is also recommended for secondary students. Any middle school or high school student who attends will receive extra credit in their health classes. Thank you to Mrs. Hackett for volunteering to help register student attendees for their extra credit. Also, this event will not be recorded, so if you would like to enjoy the event, you do need to come in person. And the committee is planning a virtual event for June on internet safety. More details to come, and thank you to the committee for their hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Love. To end my Superintendent's Report, I just want to wish my mother a happy seventy-fifth birthday. In my family, it's not till this weekend, but in my family, the person who says it first gets the credit, so I'm telling my siblings, I get credit first, and because it's on TV, double credit. So happy birthday, Mom.
Happy birthday from all of us.
And that, Madam President, is my report.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Mom. Okay, the public work session, we have the first item is the elementary science curriculum update. Mr. Gavin?
Sure. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Moriarty to introduce our two presenters this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. We are really excited to share with you guys the work that we've been doing around the district for science this year. Tonight, we are joined by Mr. Eckert and Mrs. Grubb, who are representatives of their larger district-wide fifth-grade team. They will be talking to us about mystery science that we implemented this year in fifth grade and the New York State Science Investigations that we will be implementing in grades three and four. And before they begin, well, first, thank you very much for being here with us. We did put a lot of effort into this, and we really appreciate it, but I want to make sure that we start off with the four main things that we're going to hear from our teachers. First, this was a teacher-led initiative, so starting last year or the year before, they realized that there was an area of growth for us in science, so they identified that area, they engaged in
Yes, it is totally permissible. Go take them out to dinner or something. Wherever they need to go to next.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Congratulations again.
Now, that's a good way to start a meeting. Love it, love it, love it, love it.
Agreed.
Okay, so going back, we also had this week, we had a parent university for our elementary parents. Dr. Moriarty and the elementary principals partnered with some of our amazing staff to put on the elementary parent university this past Tuesday evening. The feedback we have received has been really, really positive. We held workshops on the science of reading, robotics, coding, differentiation, the transition from fifth grade to middle school, and elementary mathematics. Kudos to all of the collaborative effort, and we look forward to the secondary parent university, which will be held on April 26th. Look for more info to come. Dr. Moriarty, just want to tell some people when the emails are coming out?
So, the email for our interest to see what topics that we would like to hear about as the community will be going out tomorrow morning, which will then be followed up with a very quick registration process the following week. And then after that, everybody will receive information about what they're doing and where they're going. And also on our website is the information about the elementary parent U and all of the different presentations that were present. So if anybody wasn't able to come, they're there with my contact information. So if anybody wants more information, they're also able to contact me at any time.
Thank you, Dr. Moriarty. Also on Tuesday, Tuesday was very busy. We kicked off the spring athletic season with an informational meeting for our spring athletes, coaches, and parents. The goal of this meeting was reinforcing a positive climate around our athletic community. We discussed our expectations for coaches, athletes, and parents. The feedback again was very positive. We are so proud and excited for this season because our athletes are driven, our coaches will be able to communicate plans for each athlete to improve and get better, and our parents support the growth and development of our programs. Thank you to Ms. Rosseto, the coaches, and Dr. Walsh for their support, and thank you to all of our parents, boosters, and athletes that attended the event. Thank you very much. On some other information, we had the Clean Water Grant Award winner was also at Southside High School. We are so proud of Marina Ayano, a sophomore enrolled in Mr. Russo's Science Research class, who was chosen as a winner of the 2023 Long Island Water Quality Challenge, which is a science, technology, and engineering mathematics competition presented by the Long Island Regional Planning Council. Ms. Ayano earned an official certificate of outstanding achievement and for her school earned a $2,500 grant. Marina competed as the only solo competitor in the whole contest, and she faced off against full teams of people in grades nine through 12 from other schools around Long Island. She specifically focused on how to develop a strategy to reduce nitrate and phosphate pollution. I won't get into the specifics because I'm going to mispronounce it, in order to protect Long Island's water resources. A $2,500 grant will be awarded to Southside High School to be used exclusively toward the implementation of her planned research for next year. We are super proud of Marina. Well done. We will be inviting her to an upcoming board meeting so that we can recognize her as well. On another note, course request updates at both the high school and middle school will be going out Monday, excuse me, Friday or Monday of either Friday tomorrow or Monday of this week. We are sending out the course requests that our children, our students have made that list all the new courses as well that was approved by the board, so that parents can review the schedules with their child and then contact their child's guidance counselor if they want to make any changes. So those letters are going out Friday for the high school, Monday for the middle school. Now we have, we start to get into spring with a tremendous amount of upcoming events. Number one, the Ed Foundation Gala is next Saturday, April 1st, at Gatsby's of Jones Beach. I'm enthusiastically looking forward to going to my first gala. And once again, thank the Ed Foundation in advance for all of the support for our students here in Rockville Center. The COVID Variety Show is next week as well. That'll be on March 30th in the middle school auditorium. Dr. Moriarty and I are somehow included in the festivities. I'm not really sure how. We were voluntold by Mr. Raymar. We're not exactly sure how we're involved, but if Mr. Raymar's involved, it's somewhat of a risky proposition. We also have Hewitt Kids Night Out is next Friday, 3:31. We have Watson kindergarten and first grade pajama bedtime story is April 3rd. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, April 4th. So again, we have a Tuesday board meeting for the next, for our next board meeting, which will be a work session. And we had an update from the wellness committee. Dr. Dewey is coming to Rockville Center next Tuesday. Ms. Love, would you please give us a little bit of information on that?
Sure. I'll give an overview from our wellness committee meeting yesterday. So our wellness committee is comprised of staff, PTA members, and Board of Ed member Mrs. Hackett. We met yesterday. Items on the agenda included the following. Wellness minutes. So please be on the watch for the final installments of our educational videos, which will cover the importance of making connections. That video will be starring Dr. Vera Fjor, Northwell Pediatric Psychiatrist, as well as a series featuring transition for our students who will be transitioning from elementary, middle, or high school to their next academic experience. So those videos will be coming out this spring. Save the date, the Wellness Walk will be held on May 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Southside Middle School. There are a wide variety of enjoyable activities planned, from therapeutic arts and crafts to mindfulness and yoga to an exciting color run. So please keep an eye out on your email. As an invitational flyer will be sent to all families next week. Thank you to Ms. Kabas and Ms. Brenner, our elementary guidance counselors, for working with Mrs. Ramsey and I on this very special event. They've put so much work into it. Dr. Dewey. Dr. Dewey, neuroscientist and research professor, will be featured at the Southside High School on March 28th at 7:30 p.m. Dr. Dewey will be delivering a presentation entitled "The Effects of Substance Abuse on the Adolescent Brain." This event is for parents. It is also recommended for secondary students. Any middle school or high school student who attends will receive extra credit in their health classes. Thank you to Mrs. Hackett for volunteering to help register student attendees for their extra credit. Also, this event will not be recorded, so if you would like to enjoy the event, you do need to come in person. And the committee is planning a virtual event for June on internet safety. More details to come, and thank you to the committee for their hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Love. To end my superintendent's report, I just want to wish my mother a happy 75th birthday. In my family, it's not till this weekend, but in my family, the person who says it first gets the credit. So I'm telling my siblings, I get credit first, and because it's on TV, double credit. So happy birthday, Mom.
Happy birthday from all of us.
And that, Madam President, is my report.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Mom. Okay, the public work session, we have the first item is the elementary science curriculum update. Mr. Gavin?
Sure, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Moriarty to introduce our two presenters this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. We are really excited to share with you guys the work that we've been doing around the district for science this year. Tonight, we are joined by Mr. Eckert and Mrs. Grub, who are representatives of their larger district-wide fifth-grade team. They will be talking to us about mystery science that we implemented this year in fifth grade, and the New York State Science Investigations that we will be implementing in grades three and four. And before they begin, well, first, thank you very much for being here with us. We did put a lot of effort into this, and we really appreciate it. But I want to make sure that we start off with the four main things that we're going to hear from our teachers. First, this was a teacher-led initiative. So starting last year or the year before, they realized that there was an area of growth for us in science. So they identified that area, they engaged in some research, they then started to implement lessons and units, with this year being the year that we were implementing completely. They provided feedback and garnered feedback from their colleagues. They then developed a plan to really scale this so that all of our students in K-5 would be able to have the benefit of having a mystery science curriculum. What's, the second thing we're going to hear is that mystery science provides an opportunity to deepen students' understanding of their world and to really make sense of it and to have that relevance come into the classroom. We'll also hear that the units and the lessons make connections to the other content areas, such as history and ELA. And then we're also going to hear that RVC is really leading the way in bringing the New York State Science Investigations into the classroom this year. Again, all led by our teachers. So I cannot underscore enough how our teachers are committed to providing the most meaningful and relevant educational experience for all of our students. And ultimately, what I hope that you take away from this is that Mr. Eckert and Mrs. Grub and all of our teachers are deeply driven to collaborate between the buildings and grade levels, seeking to horizontally and vertically align the practices and the curriculum that we are using, and ultimately to foster and cultivate a sense of wonder and excitement for all of our learners. So without further ado, please, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the lovely introduction, Dr. Moriarty. Keith Thacker, I teach fifth grade at Riverside.
And I'm Andrea Grub, and I teach fifth grade at Watson.
So we're going to walk you through just why we love mystery science so much. It's something that Andrea and I have been very passionate about, and it has really sparked through not only just the fifth-grade team, as Dr. Moriarty was saying, but it's really trickling down to the kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth graders. So first and foremost, what is mystery science? So mystery science has been around for quite some time, and the creator Doug Pelz has really done a fantastic job of kind of trying to recreate childhood for everybody. I think of my own four-year-old daughter is always walking out with that curious mind, "Hey Daddy, hey Mommy, why is this? What's going on with that? How does that work?" And at some point in our lives, we kind of lose that level of curiosity. So what Doug and the mystery science team, and you'll hear Doug's voice later, everybody knows Doug, one of the things that they really are passionate about is bringing that curiosity back. So too quickly, in classrooms, we're very often answering questions for kids rather than helping them to explain where that answer came from. So what mystery science does is at the very beginning is they ask a question. It's kind of like the students are going to be detectives, and they're going to be solving a mystery. So the question that we're all going to be solving later tonight is, "Can a mountain last forever?" And what is going to happen is you're not going to find out the answer, but they're going to lead you through the process of how that answer came, and all the students are able to sort of arrive at that on their own. So again, it's not that sort of, it's the forward thinking and working towards it in that direction.
So as Dr. Moriarty alluded to earlier, Keith and I have been invested in mystery science for a really long time. It came to us possibly even over 10 years ago. It was a free thing. We signed up, we tried it out. It was a great way to enrich what we were already doing in science. And then the Ed Foundation gave, I think actually you wrote one a few years ago, grant for mystery science, and it's something that we've been using collaboratively throughout a couple of years. But we really felt this would impact the students if, from K to five, we were using it. So through a lot of research, collaboration, we realized that it can seamlessly get us to where we need to be with the investigations and the science standards shifting. But it's something that I talked to my husband this morning, and he's like, "Well, what are you going to be talking about?" I'm like, "Do you want to sit down? Because I could talk about this for hours." And he's like, "I don't really have time. Does it have anything to do with the periodic table?" And I'm like, "Well, that's where Doug is completely different from how we learned." You know, there's no memorizing. It's constantly thinking and being curious. And just within a lesson this week, we came up with at least five more questions that we could try to answer based on the lesson that we were doing. And it hits kids from all different experiences, which is so nice. It connects with everyone. So this screen sort of shows what every lesson interface looks like. It shows activity prep. It shows you some standards that are covering. But what we really love is through the inquiry-based mindset, it can collapse curriculum. So if you notice on the screen, there are ways to extend a lesson, but there's a reading component, there's an assessment component, there are activities. It's very student-centered, it's student-driven, there are links to writing ideas that they can come up with. And one of my favorite things is because it's so student-interest-led, the enrichment opportunities are endless. It could be an independent assignment that a kid is really interested about, and you have some extra time throughout your schedule, you can assign these independent activities for kids to do, and there are kids that really would eat this up. There is also a possibility to share the videos. So if a kid has a band lesson or is out sick, you can pop the video that you're going to see momentarily into their Google Classroom. They have access to the material, and then they can join the discussion for the next lesson. So the access for all is really great, and the videos are provided in Spanish.
So then just kind of the next couple of slides, we just wanted to show, mystery science has been next-generation science standards-aligned for many years. As Andrea was saying, it's something that we've been looking at. We've kind of used it to help supplement the science program we already have in place. We do have to say thank you to Dr. Moriarty, the board, and administration just for supporting mystery science. It's something that we've been asking for, for a really long time, to get going in fifth grade. So it's really amazing that we were able to get all the supply kits and the materials needed to really dive into these lessons. So we just showed you a couple of the units for each grade up there, and then we kind of just screenshotted one lesson from each unit, so you could kind of see the progression. So we kind of went with the theme of animals and life cycles. So in kindergarten, you could see that the mystery they're solving, one of their lessons is, "Why do woodpeckers peck wood?" So again, it's kind of something that even my seven-year-old son was just asking me the other day that he heard of woodpecker. In first grade, they kind of build on that, "Why do birds have beaks?" And then in second grade, you kind of see, "Why would a wild animal want to visit a playground?" If you see kind of the little clip art there, they do an amazing job at mystery science of really just holding the students' attention. All of the videos and all the clips are only about four to five minutes long at the maximum, and there's natural stopping points for discussion. So it's never something that a video gets played for 15 minutes, and then the kids forget what was spoken about five minutes ago. It's always a couple-minute clip, and then there's a natural stopping point where it pauses, and you have an open discussion with the students. If we look at three, four, five, we'll just kind of touch on what the investigations are in a moment, but you kind of see, just following that progression, in third grade, we just kind of screenshotted a lesson about how long people and animals can survive in outer space. In fourth grade, how can some animals see in the dark? And then fifth grade, why would a hawk move to New York City? So you kind of see the progression of always building off the previous. As Dr. Moriarty mentioned before, New York State has pushed down the science investigations to get us ready for the fifth-grade science test next year, and it was really very, I don't want to say easy, but it was kind of easy for us to implement seamless, thank you, Ms. Grub, to implement it into our current third, fourth, and fifth grade, because there are mystery science lessons that already teach and are tied into the cloud-in-the-bottle, the circle of life, all those investigations that New York State is requiring for our third, fourth, and fifth graders before they take that fifth-grade science test. We didn't have to recreate anything because it's already there in mystery science. So it was very easily done for us. It was very seamless. And then really, just to kind of, we have a couple screenshots of some lessons that Mrs. Grub and I did with our classes recently. My class right now is working on an astronomy unit. So we did, in the first picture kind of on the top left there, the students actually became the Earth. They put on a little, you know, shirt, sort of, if you will, out of paper, little overalls, and then they would rotate around the sun right in front of them, and it kind of just talked about the idea of, "Do we rotate around the sun? Does the sun rotate around us?" And then the other pictures there, we recently made shadow clocks, so we kind of made that connection to sundials. The mystery we solved was, "Who set the first clock?" And that lesson kind of started with, you know, you get a brand-new clock, or the battery in your watch dies, how do you know what time it is? And it's, "Oh, you look at the clock on the wall." But at some point, who set that first clock? So we used shadow clocks, we used a flashlight, we talked about the height of the sun in the sky, and then it was really neat, we got to go outside, because it happened to be a sunny day, and then my students were able to sort of face north, put their shadow clocks on the ground, and it was just so exciting to see their faces, how amazed they were that it actually worked. You know, they had the flashlight in front, they're like, "Oh, yeah, we see it." Then we went outside, and it was the exact same thing, because the flashlight mimicked the sun, and they're like, "Mr. Eckert, it really works!" And it's kind of like, "Yeah, of course it does."
We did that lesson, too, this week, and the kids just could not believe. But seriously, like, how did the first clock work? Did they just figure it out? I said, "I have a feeling they did a lot of research and investigation and observation," which is what mystery science is all about. They're constantly observing, thinking, critiquing their own thoughts. It's great. So when I asked some of my students what their favorite investigation that we've done so far this year was this idea of, "Do worms really eat dirt?" And hundreds of years ago, people thought worms were harmful to garden, so they started getting rid of worms. And in fact, worms are not harmful. So we really investigated, "Do they really eat dirt?" And it was all about putting nutrients back into the soil, and they got to play with worms, so I love that. And I asked a few of our students that really enjoy our science program to share a little bit about what they felt about mystery science. So these two students, James and Jack.
Hi. I'm James.
I'm Jack.
And we're here to tell you about the mystery science. The experiments are enjoyable and fun.
The video shows you how to do the experiments and then shows us the outcome.
The video at the beginning innings of the experiments show us cool phenomenons about what we're like learning about or what experiments we're doing.
Awesome. And what were your favorite lessons that we've done?
My favorite one is either the one that we did with the mold or the dinosaur.
I think mine was rather the mold or the worms. I say the worms are good because you got to like play around with them in the mold, because you got to see moldy food.
The worms, you did get to name them.
Yeah.
Did we work together or was it me and you?
No, it was me and you.
Yeah. And so, I like the dinosaur ones because I really like dinosaurs, and the mold one was really fun because like it's with a lot of nature and you like get to see how it's happening, and it's like really fun to do. Stay curious.
Stay curious.
Bye.
Bye.
They're great. So they did work together, and that's another piece that we love about the mystery science, is it offers opportunities for students to learn from each other and to work together.
So our next thought here was, rather than to continue to explain to you how great mystery science is, we thought we would kind of take everyone through a shortened version of it. We are going to play a short video. It's only a few minutes long, but you can kind of just see in that first minute or two how well the mystery science team is able to hook the students in. So if we just click on that lesson introduction, you'll see the, just the first minute or two.
Hi, it's Doug. You're looking at Mount Everest, the tallest mountain in the world. Mount Everest and the surrounding Himalaya Mountains are so tall that astronauts can see their snow-capped peaks all the way from space. Part of what makes mountains so impressive is that they're solid rock all the way through. Like, look, this isn't a mound of individual rocks piled up really high. This mountain is one single solid rock. Mountains are like walls of vertical rock going straight up into the sky. But will these mountains always be there? Do mountains last forever? You might think, "Well, yeah, why not?" But let me tell you a story, a story about not a natural mountain, but a mountain made by people. This, a pyramid, you know, like the kind built by the ancient Egyptians. The Egyptians lived right here, but our story actually takes place on the other side of the world, here, in the jungles of Central America. The people over here made a type of pyramid.
Just in the interest of time, but you can kind of see, he's already hooked the kids in by asking that question. He's made that connection to his real-life phenomenon of you being able to see mountains out in outer space. And now what we're going to do is, we're kind of going to just take you through what one of the lessons would be. Everything's very scripted. It tells teachers exactly what they need beforehand. It tells students when they need to work with a partner. It tells them what supplies are needed. And what Mrs. Grub and I did was, we kind of put together some of those supplies. That's what's on your tables, and we're just going to take you through a shortened version of kind of what that student activity would be after we finish the exploration.
Okay, so in front of you, you have your container, which is going to represent nature, and then you have the sugar cubes. You're going to take one of the sugar cubes out, the one plain sugar cube, one of the plain sugar cubes, and you can kind of keep it off to the side. And you would have the students observe it, draw it, what does it look like? And you're constantly trying to get them to think, "I wonder what this represents." And you're trying to get them to see that it represents something within the topic that we're just, that we're covering. And they would have a form in front of them, and we would explain, you're going to put your lid back on, and you're going to shake the jar 40 times, hard. Make sure the lid's on tight. And then there would be, you guys could stop. And then there would be a timer, and that's a great part.
The TV audience is hating us. Absolutely hating us.
So at certain points, we would stop, observe, look what's happened. They have discussion with their partners. And the other great thing is that often in groups, you have the one friend that's going to just kind of like hang back and not be involved, but the way that these lessons are set up, everyone gets a job, and they take turns. So you're the shaker first, and I'm going to be the recorder, and then we flip-flop the jobs. So everyone's constantly being involved. So you would repeat this several times, you could give it a quick little shake, and the discussion would then become, "What do you notice? What do you think this has to do with the mountains that we saw in the video?" And Doug will have prompts, and there are questions throughout the lesson that prompt the students to start to make the connection between weathering and erosion. And hopefully, at the end, they are left with this idea that, "Will mountains last forever?" And they will have an opinion based on what they have done. So that's, that's it. End of that job.
You can see, some of those sugar cubes have kind of like a red or a blue outline. So as the experiments kind of continue, obviously that red or blue will sort of start to fade away, so that's where they kind of see like the rocks are. And then kind of to piggyback to that, this would be sort of the beginning of the closure, because there's always an assessment piece at the end that can be done either at the conclusion of a lesson or another day, but there's always kind of like a summarization. So this is, again, just kind of like a screenshot from it where it says, "Rocks at the top of a mountain are jagged like this," so you see pointy rocks, "and then rocks at the bottom of mountains are more rounded like this. Why do you think rocks look different?" And the idea is, the students have now looked at their sugar cubes that were all rough, rigid edges, and now after shaking it 40 times to the point where, yes, they will break the tuckware, so. And then they'll be able to look at the sugar cubes, and now instead of that kind of three-dimensional figure, you're seeing more of like a circular shape. So they would have done this over, I think it's four or five trials, and they shake it about 40 times. So it really does show that idea of like the weathered rocks. And then kind of just to talk about our outcomes for learners, you can kind of see that there's tons of collaboration, as Mrs. Grub mentioned. The students are working with partners all the time. They do a really great job of sometimes, instead of saying like, "Get a part," once you get a partner, they'll say, "Okay, one person's going to be the spaghetti, one person's going to be the meatball." It's never person A and person B. It's always just kind of like a silly little thing. It helps the students make sense of the world around them, that idea of just, "Will a mountain last forever?" So now they've just proven that these rocks are falling from the top of a mountain, and you see that over thousands and millions of years, a mountain eventually will not be there anymore. And it's so engaging, every single lesson is hands-on. There is no kind of remote memorization, there's nothing that they're just reading and having to regurgitate to you. It's some type of phenomenon presented, they do an activity, they kind of start to get that answer, and in that closure, they'll come back to that question. And Doug will kind of say, "Hey, remember when we talked about yada, yada?" And it's just these common experiences for the students across the district. We were trying to increase our collaboration and give everybody those same opportunities. And our favorite thing, of course, about mystery science, well, two more quick things before we get to the favorite part. They also have created what's called Mystery Doug. So if anybody at home has access, you can go to mysteriesdoug.com, just enter your email, and they do little five-minute short videos. And what's really great is students can submit a question. Through all the years we've been submitting questions, none of my students have been picked, but it'll be a student that asks a question, and they're almost FaceTiming Doug or somebody at mystery science, and they get to ask a question, and they kind of give them a quick answer. So the recent one was, "How do astronauts get ready for outer space?" There was one on, "How do dogs sweat, or do dogs even sweat?" So they get a quick question like that. And actually, just today, they've released, they're working on a writing piece. So there's called Mystery Writing that just came out today, and it's connected to the existing mystery science units. So it'll be a lot of opportunities for informational writing pieces. So again, that could kind of get to our transdisciplinary opportunities across all grade levels. And then, of course, our favorite thing that Mrs. Grub and I always love to say at the end of a lesson is, "Stay curious." We practice it.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of points. First and foremost, you know, the thing that excites me the most about this is when you have a highly functioning organization, you have teachers working together with administrators to make good things happen for kids. And so this was something where teachers had an idea. And so this was something where teachers had an idea and a desire to move a project forward. We worked together on it, and now all of our students are going to have the opportunity to have these good experiences. So to me, that speaks really highly to the collaborative effort on behalf of both of our teachers and administration to work together to get something done. So, well done. I mean, there is no one out there that, if you have a good idea for students, and this I say to the faculty all the time, we can pretty much solve any problem ourselves, we don't really need to go out there because we have talented people in the room. So thank you for being advocates for kids and talented people. Number two, I was at the mold experiment in Mr. Eckert's class. It was quite interesting. In addition to the mold experiment, they also shook me down for a free pizza party. So, um, that was a dual-purpose thing there in that fifth grade class down at Riverside. But the thing that I liked the most was listening to the conversations of groups of two to three kids talking about what are the factors that are going to introduce the most mold on these pieces of fruit? You know, and so they were talking about, I think it should be in the dark, I think it should be in the light, I think it should be in the heat, I think it should be in the cold. So they were talking about all these different variables, working through a process and doing it collaboratively. So to me, I thought that was a great example of mystery science, and I thank you for that as well. It also goes to show the importance of tying together curiosity and inquiry, right? So you can be curious about something, learn to ask great questions, and then see the interdisciplinary connections. So you saw just in the lesson that we just, just the clip of the lesson, there's a reference to the pyramids, right? Cultural, different pyramids culturally, they were probably about to get to the Yucatan Peninsula and talk about the Mayans and the pyramids they made. And so there's a lot of rich exploration that can happen there. And those ideas where kids get to see connections between different subject disciplines are really important. So I really thank you for our program. Dr. Moriarty, I missed anything? I know you probably have a couple of things to say yourself, so.
I have a whole bullet list, but, but something that really stands out to me too, that I think that we definitely should underscore too, is this idea of that essential question, and then the guiding questions, tying in the content areas, and being very curious and allowing kids to explore that, and then to write from a place of strength, and then read also from a place of strength. And today, the reading teachers and the ESL teachers, they worked with, um, the keys to literacy, and the actual module that we were working on today were student-generated questions, and how to make sure that we're using Bloom's Taxonomy, and providing multiple opportunities throughout the school day for students to ask questions, engage in those collaborative conversations, and to further their learning through their own questioning, not us asking the question. So it's just really nice how everything is really coming together, and it really is teacher-driven from beginning to end. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. We've heard about this for a number, this program for a number of years, and thank you for being leaders in this program and seeing a need and an opportunity to expand it for all of our students and for advocating for our students. I love the fact that it makes connections across the disciplines, subject areas, and real-world connections. And most importantly, it's fun for our students, and it seems to be fun for the two of you too. I really appreciated the thoughtfulness behind the interactive, I'm glad we had sugar cubes and not the molds, so thank you for that. And red and blue sugar cubes, very thoughtful, thank you. Yep. Any comments or questions from the board?
I would just say thank you, thank you for bringing this to us, thank you for bringing this to the district. And I just, by way of a question, I wonder if you find in your own classrooms that this material sticks, that the students remember it maybe a little bit better, do you find that?
Yeah, a hundred percent, I mean, it's because of the hands-on part, it's not the, you know, reading from the textbook, answering the questions. So the fact that they're engaged in the inquiry process, it helps it stick for sure.
I would agree. In different topics that we're covering, months later, they will still reference back to things that we were doing in September and October through mystery science, so it definitely sticks.
That's great.
I just thought, and it was very interesting, because Mr. Gavin, when he came in for the pizza party, months after we did the mold, he started asking my students what the biggest inhibitors the mold were, and I kind of had that teacher moment like, oh, please know the answer. And they started hammering out answers to the questions to the point where I was just kind of like, yup, yup, they got it.
It stuck.
It's great, thank you.
Thank you both, I love the enthusiasm also, and I know it's shared with the students that they'll feed off of you, so thank you. And congratulations on your half marathon, by the way, I saw that on the Rockville Center page. My question is about mystery science and what it offers beyond what we can teach. So we are right now offering at K to five, because where elementary is up to five. But elementary school technically is up to sixth grade, I'm just curious, does mystery science go to sixth grade at all? Or have a program that goes beyond fifth grade at this point?
I think it's just K to five right now. It's still pretty new, it's only been around eight, ten years, something like that, so they've been building. And what's really nice, as Mrs. Grubb alluded to earlier, they are continuously evolving. They always go back into units, and you'll see that this lesson's been updated to match current content. But as of right now, unfortunately, it is just K to five.
Thank you so much. Hopefully we can continue it, I think the hands-on lessons are great ways to learn, so thank you so much.
Thank you. My sixth-grade teacher taught me about the salmon swimming upstream to lay their eggs, and the way she did it was with a hands-on experiment, and I never forgot it. So I do think it works, and I think it's exciting that they get to be involved, so thank you for your enthusiasm.
Yes, thank you so much. I have a fifth grader, and she comes home often talking about science, it's her favorite subject, which if you knew her, you'd be surprised to hear that. So, um, thank you, it's awesome, I love, I love the curiosity. I think it's so important to keep that embedded in what our young children are learning, because they lose it so quickly. So thank you so much, I appreciate all that you all are doing.
It really is our pleasure, thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Policies and superintendent's regulations, we have no new policies on the agenda tonight. At stage two, we have seventy-one sixty, assignment of students to elementary schools. Any comments or questions on seventy-one sixty? Okay, to move this forward? At stage three, we have eighty-four fifty, home tutoring, home hospital or institutional instruction. Any comments or questions on eighty-four fifty? Okay, to move this to approval at the next meeting? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the budget work, don't forget your kits up here too. Budget work session, Mr. Gavin?
Sure, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bartels, who will run us through two different components of the budget this evening. One is on our athletic program, the second is on foundation aid and some of the federal funds that we've had over the years since COVID started. So, Mr. Bartels.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So, uh, we continue our budget discussion tonight. In addition to athletics, I think we want to talk a little bit about the music and art program, and then a couple of other items that we hadn't talked about in the past, transportation and the community service part of our budget. I think it's great following the mystery science, you know, one of the items that I mentioned in a previous meeting, that's going to be included for next year. So it's great to see some of these things in action. So tonight, again, I would go over the budget schedule and a summary of the budget, and along with the athletics, music, transportation, and community portions. Budget schedule, again, we're at March twenty-third. We have a couple more hearings, the next budget discussion will be the preliminary budget hearing. That's really the final time that we can make changes to the budget. Once those final changes are made, if we make any, we have a formal budget hearing on May third, and then we have the annual election and budget vote on May sixteenth. As we discussed before, we're at five point seven four percent on the budget increase. One of the reasons for that is we have a large infusion of capital projects this year, which we're going to pay for much of it with some of our reserves, through one-time use of reserves for some capital. That's why that percentage is up a little higher. The tax levy will be one point nine nine percent, which is under our tax cap of two point two one percent for Rockville Center. In addition, a story came out in Newsday this week, the average on Long Island is about two point two one percent. So while that's our cap, that's actually the average tax increase that all districts in Long Island will be going out with. We're actually at one point nine nine, are in the lower third, so I think we're in good shape with our budget going forward. So, for our athletic budget, we made a few changes this year. We added some programs for the current year, as well as adding some assistant coaches. For next year, we are planning the addition of six new programs. At the high school, we have JV boys volleyball, which will take place in the fall. At the middle school, the volleyball program has kind of taken off very quickly, so we'll be doing, um, middle school boys volleyball as well. That will be in the winter two session, as well as boys track in winter one. For the girls, we will have girls track in winter one at the middle school. Also at the middle school, girls cheerleading in both the fall and the winter one sessions. Other parts of the athletic budget, in addition to all the different teams that we have, are our coaches and our assistant coaches, so the cost for all those. We have supervisors at different events, so that would include kind of crowd control in some cases. In some cases, those people do scorebooks, run the scoreboards, things like that. We have an athletic trainer that we fund, who works with all our students, student athletes. We have facility rentals, so in addition to being able to do things at our own facilities, we need to use other facilities. So we have greens fees for the golf team, tennis court fees for the tennis team, and we pay for the use of the aquatic center in Nassau County for a swim team. Another part of the budget is maintenance and reconditioning. So every year, we have our football teams, all lacrosse teams have different parts of equipment, helmets. A number of those have to go through reconditioning, recertification every year to make sure they're all up to code and safe for all of our students. We have BOSI's coordination and referee fees. BOSI's is the ones that does all the scheduling of all the teams with the other school districts. They also provide the referees. We have supplies for all of our teams, all the different types of equipment that they have. The footballs, basketballs, soccer balls continually need to be replaced every year. And finally, we're going to be upgrading the locker room in the basement of the high school for football and lacrosse. That room was in need of an upgrade to begin with, but because of increases in our football and lacrosse programs, we needed to add additional lockers for them for next year, we need to kind of expand that space a little bit. So we're in the process of doing that, so that will be in place for next year. The music and arts program in the district, again, this is part of the instructional budget, as was athletics and physical education. We do physical education, music and the arts from kindergarten through twelfth grade. But they're all kind of fall within the instructional budget, but they don't have any particular codes, so they're spread throughout. So that's why I kind of figured I'd talk about them a little separately. So for art, we have staffing, supplies, paints, brushes, all other materials. When we get into the high school, we'll have photography equipment and things like that. We have equipment repairs that are done as part of our art budget. In music, in addition to staffing, we have instruments, which include rentals, leases and repairs. We try to replace our instruments on an ongoing basis. So we have five-year leases, lease purchase agreements for our instruments, so we can continually refurbish those and have newer instruments in the hands of the students as much as possible. We have supplies for music, sheet music that we need to pay for, as well as music stands need to be replaced from time to time. And transportation, sometimes we have students going to various performances, sometimes it's just within the district, going back and forth. We have transportation expenses. When we get to the high, middle school and the high school, we have performing arts. We have high school and middle school plays and productions. Do mention, we do have at the elementary school, some of our clubs do plays and productions as well, some on a much smaller scale, obviously. But that does happen, not within the regular school day, but in after-school programs. At the high school, we have, for the plays and productions we do, we have choreographers, producers, scenic coordinators, lighting, costumes. So we really put a lot of effort into supporting those programs. In addition, we have licensing fees for music that we utilize during the programs, as well as supplies and materials, building sets and so forth, always requires additional funding. Transportation, this is one that has kind of a separate budget coding. About five point one million in expenses for transportation. That covers several areas. One is district transportation, the school district owns its own kind of small fleet of mini-buses. We have three or four out at any given time during the school day. This pays for drivers, bus aides, and the office staff who coordinates it. We have maintenance, inspections, supply costs for those buses, and pay for insurance. We have testing of our drivers to make sure they meet various requirements, and routing software that we utilize to make sure all of our routes are running as efficiently as possible, and that our buses are, have the right number of students on each one of them. We also have contract transportation. Our contract transportation is up quite a bit for next year. So we have this issue where our budget increases for transportation, our contract increases are based on the May-to-May CPI. This is a little different than the CPI that's used for the tax cap, which is January-to-January CPI. The problem we have in a year like this was the May-to-May was much higher than the January-to-January. So we got stuck with a higher increase in our contract transportation for this year than we had expected. We are again, with the CPI continuing to be up there this year, we are expecting another fairly large increase. So overall, we're expecting our contract transportation budget to be up about twelve percent next year. That does cover in-district and out-of-district bus transportation for all of the in-district schools, as well as a lot of our private schools, private and parochial schools. That contract transportation also provides field trips, also provides our athletic transportation. So for athletes, we are kind of land poor here in Rockville Center, so we do need to transport our athletes to other fields and facilities for practices and games. Also in transportation is public transportation, which we cover any students that we have going on the railroad or the Nassau County transportation system. But I don't think we have any through that system right now, we do have several on the Long Island Railroad, some students that go into the city to some private schools, we pay for them to get, the way it works is the first fifteen miles, but that gets many of them into the zones that they need to get to various schools. So, uh, that's a nice thing we do. BOSI's transportation, this has also hit the same way, or contract transportation. We have students who go to certain BOSI's programs, be it special ed or career ed programs, occupational ed. So those costs actually are up close to twenty-five percent for our budget. So that's, uh, transportation overall is taking that kind of, one of those large hits in our budget this year. And in our community service portion of the budget, it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but this is really, for the most part, us opening up our schools to all of our community programs. This really covers the costs of custodial and security on the weekends to open our buildings, so the community members can utilize those services. There's also a small budget piece in there for our annual census that we have to do. So, again, summarizing, just a few notes, budget increase at five point seven four, the tax levy at one point nine nine. Again, under our tax cap, we are using two and a half million dollars from our undesignated fund balance to support some of the capital projects that we're doing, specifically the South Side Middle School roof, and putting in place a turf field at the middle school. Middle School roof and putting in place a turf field at the middle school. Both of them are desperately needed projects, and will go a long way to improving our facilities for our students. We have no program cuts, again, as talked about. We are expanding offerings in all of our buildings, both in-school and after-school. We're going to maintain the staffing and support programs that were provided by our COVID funding. It's one of the things I'll be talking about in the next segment, is how we're utilizing foundation aid to move forward. But we are planning not, we want to continue those support programs for all of our students. We've received, one of the things I talked about earlier was we had planned some retirement breakage to offset some of the increasing costs, and I'm happy to say that we have had enough retirements. We know that at this point that it will cover what we had planned for, what that offsetting cost would be. So we're in good shape, budget wise. And the foundation aid provided by the state has gone a long way this year in supporting this budget. The governor's proposal does require a set aside for about $350,000 for grade three to eight tutoring. We're not sure that that's actually going to be included in the final budget, but that is something that we may need to have continuing discussions about. I'll talk about that again when I get into discussion about foundation aid. And that's my update for tonight on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Can I just ask you, for our April 4 meeting, could you just provide the board and the community with just another overview summary of all of our discussions that we've had at each of our meetings leading up to that meeting?
Sure.
Before the 18th?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
Just to circle back to, you opened with information across Nassau County about how other districts, now that we're starting to see other districts' proposed budgets come in, it's maybe the only time, we want our school district to be below average.
Yes.
Right? So our increase at 1.99 is below what other, the average of what other districts nearby and across the county are asking.
Yes, correct. We're in that, I guess, the bottom third, lowest third of the increases.
The top part of the bottom third. That's where we're at.
One question about additional coaches. Is it for the six new teams and six new assistants? Is that what we're adding?
Yes, that's the increase for those coaches. That's what it is for next year. The increases for the assistant coaches for all the other teams was included in the current year's budget.
Okay. And then for the art side, we mentioned like lighting and equipment. How do we audit our current lighting situation, mics? I mean, I was at one of the concerts last week, and there was a really annoying light that kept going off at the middle school, and somebody was saying it had to do with Wi-Fi. I'm not sure.
Right.
I don't know if that's a kid urban legend, but that's what the kids were talking about, that you can't use your phone because, this is what the teachers tell them, you can't use your phone because it makes the lights blink.
I could bring Bob down to explain it, but there is supposedly, the way that we transmit to that row of lighting is supposedly on the same frequency that most cell phones are on. So one of the things we asked, we had the lighting company come back and take a look at it and just say, what would be the best way to do it? So we're currently testing out two different options. One is to change the piece, we're going to rent a piece of equipment. It's going to cost like $120 to rent it, try it out. That will change the frequency and see if that has any impact. And if that doesn't work, we're going to have to look at some more involved solutions. But our lighting experts right now are telling us that change the frequent, change this one little piece of equipment, and we can go from there.
Okay.
So that's about $500 if we have to buy it, if we have to rent it. It's not a big number.
Right.
But we want to make sure that we test it beforehand.
Yeah, I'm looking at more, less about, you know, exactly what it costs, but more that, just that we're auditing these things, because the other side of it too is, these kids work so hard.
Yeah.
And we don't want anything distracting.
And drove me crazy.
It was driving me crazy, but also I've been to plays and productions where some of the headsets aren't working, the mics, and I always feel so sorry for the kids that are, you know, out there getting their solo in, and now we can't hear them. So I'm just wondering if we're auditing this equipment besides just, you know, trying to add.
So I asked Dr. Zouar to follow up on that. So we did have at one point, one of the concerts that, or, excuse me, the middle school production that happened in the fall, where one of the students' mics went out in the middle of singing. So I asked him to also get, you know, to make sure that we have appropriately working mics, the right number of mics, to make sure that they, their frequencies don't interfere with each other, so that things work, you know, more seamlessly.
Thank you.
So we did engage a consultant on that, and we're working on that right now.
Thank you. You'll continue to keep us updated on that process as it unfolds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. We're hoping to have everything. We know we have spring concerts coming. We know we have spring productions coming, so we want to make sure that all of these things are, the light alone drove me
Yeah, me too.
Quite insane. So yes, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was at that middle school production, and there's nothing worse than
There is nothing worse.
... on that child doing a solo, and their parents are looking at them, and you can't hear them. So just a little bit about the music and arts. I know, Robert, you mentioned that there are clubs in the grammar school that allow for some productions. I know, just speaking for, as a parent from Uitt, for years, we had a drama club at Uitt, and at the end, the culmination for the drama club was a trip to Manhattan to see a Broadway play. I do believe, and if I'm wrong, then, you know, we can figure out what other schools may need this as well, that Uitt may be the only school that no longer does an in-school production of some kind, whether it be a talent show or something that showcases the musical and art talent of the students, and also the Broadway show. At one point, when the drama club ended, we moved it, and we had the Broadway show as a fourth-grade trip. I think that may have gone aside as well, and that was through our AIM budget. We used PTA and AIM budget to do that. So, you know, just for having consistency across the board, having all of our children have the same opportunities as Dr. Moriarty has been doing with all of our curriculum, I just thought it was worth mentioning that.
Absolutely. We do know that, I did have an email from a parent about the drama club at Uitt as well, so this is something we're looking into, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I just really had one question about the arts. I know that seven through 12, we have a pretty robust arts department, both fine arts, music, and the plays. I'm really wondering a little bit more, though, about arcade through six arts. I know we have art at the elementary school one time a cycle, and there is no art offered in sixth grade. And I think it's really important that we do spend some time focusing on that, because again, we talk about like cultivating the love of learning with our students, but with art, specifically fine art, I don't know that we're doing that as much as we could be. And I'd love to see at the elementary level, thinking about adding art a second time a cycle. And more importantly, I really think we need to get art in the sixth grade. You have some students who are coming in who that is their thing. They're coming to a new school, and it doesn't exist for them. And we talk a lot about mental health and having opportunities for students. I would love to see if there's any way to make that happen for next year, and if not next year, certainly the year after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to Mr. Bartels, I believe.
Mr. Bartels, part two. Okay, so wanted to talk a little bit about two sources of funding that we have. One is foundation aid. The other is the different types of COVID funding that we've had. Couple of reasons, we have had a couple of requests from community members to kind of go over some of this funding. But in addition, there's, there are requirements from the state that we need to talk about this publicly and make sure that everybody knows kind of how we're using the funding going forward. So I'm going to start with the foundation aid. Our foundation aid increase this year was 36%, which was 3.2 million, almost 3.3 million dollars, in addition over the amount of foundation aid that we had in '22, '23. So we're required to post a plan on the district website by July 1st about how we're going to use this additional funding. We have to use the funds to improve student performance, which is really kind of, we're using just about all funding that we have to improve student performance in various ways. So that's not a problem at all. So many of what we're going to be doing is continuing to use foundation aid, which is how we've used our previous foundation aid, to fund the core needs of the students. And we're going to address various goals within that and various support services. So we would want to use that to increase graduation rates and eliminate achievement gaps, to maintain all of our class size guidelines throughout the district, to provide academic support classes and extra help for students at risk. We want to monitor the social emotional health of all of our students and provide support structures for those who may be having difficulties. We want to support our English language learners and our students with disabilities, so they have the supports that they need as well. So our total foundation aid with that increase is about $12.5 million. This was the third and final increase that we're expecting in our foundation aid. We feel that that's probably all we're going to get. There's been discussion of possibly revamping the foundation aid formula. Most likely is going to be that we're not going to be getting any more, so we're really just hoping that anything that they put in place, there'll be a save harmless, which means they won't be able to drop that funding. So we're not hearing that that's, any plans to that effect are in place, but we are concerned about that going forward. There is a plan of use required, as I mentioned, for going over 10%. That's what this plan is. Being fully funded, this is, hopefully be an ongoing aid source. So we are not expecting this number to be reduced going forward. It may become part of other aid if they change the formula, but we do not expect this to be reduced. We're going to use it to address student performance and need. The provision, about $350,000 for that targeted three to eight, we are concerned about that. Again, not yet final. We're hoping it doesn't, we want to use that money K to 12. We don't want to have to set up a specific separate program and then to limit it to both reading and math. You know, if we have to do that, we will, to make sure, but we want to use that money K to 12. We will have an allocation for social emotional support and for instructional supports to address all students who are at risk. And we do and have taken public comment into account when we do this planning. So we've had students ask, for example, for additional support for regions, so that it doesn't cost as much, and we get more people into those regions review programs. So we're doing that. People ask to continue our after-school programs, so we put some of those in place. We don't want to reduce that. We want to make sure we keep working with those programs. So we are taking public comment into account as we do these plans. Federal funding has been broken up into several different allocations, so I'm going to kind of walk everybody through each one. It's almost over at this point, but still want to kind of review for everybody what they were and what we used them. The first one that came out was the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is typically referred to as the CARES Act. That provided $430,000 to Rockville Center through two pieces. One was called ESER-1, which is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Second one is GEAR-1, which is the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Fund. Those could be allocated for any expenses we had from the beginning of the pandemic, back in March of 2020, through September 30th, 2022. That was a one-time aid source, part of stimulus funds, was used for various COVID expenses such as Wi-Fi hotspots, HVAC upgrades and repairs, and provided some funding for psychologists and teacher assistants for support. So the use of that funding, we finished during the 21, '22 school year. The second piece that came out, had a different title, is called the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. That provided the district with a little over 1.2 million and was referred to also as ESER-2. This was, again, could be allocated for expenses from the beginning of the pandemic through September of 2023. It was a one-time aid source, part of the stimulus funds, could be used for almost any purpose, but they were expected to be COVID-related. So we have plenty of COVID-related things that we could do. We use that for social workers, guidance counselors to continue to support student, identifying students at risk, and providing them with mental health supports, also for special education, academic support and classroom instruction to continue to address learning loss for those students. And a small portion of that money was continued to be used for HVAC upgrades and repairs. So as those broke, this provided us a source of funds to make sure we were able to address those repairs quickly. The use of that funding was completed during this current school year. The American Rescue Plan was a third source of funding. This was the largest one. This allocation was $2.8 million. Again, this had a few more requirements to this, similar to the foundation aid. This required us to post a plan to the district website, which is still on there. We need to describe how the funds would be utilized, basically how they were used to address student learning loss and at-risk students, as I've kind of explained before. So there's a lot of text here, but it really, that's really what it talks about. We wanted to recover costs that we utilized during the pandemic to provide additional supports for learning loss, for mental health, and for cleaning our buildings, securing our buildings during the pandemic. Again, we took parent comments into account for this as well. I know there were a number of questions, especially at the beginning, regarding fresh air and making sure the supports were there for all of our students. This slide is really just a continuation of how the utilization was supposed to be used for additional and ongoing staffing, reimbursing the district for educational technology expenses. We did need to commit at least 20% of the funding for learning loss. We had well in excess of 20%, probably more 60% or 70%, I would consider attributed to making sure there wasn't learning loss. And again, ongoing social emotional support and extended learning opportunities after school and during the summer. So this was, the American Rescue Plan is now referred to as ESER-3, so just keep giving some additional names. This funding could be used all the way through September 2024. However, we're planning on finishing up the use of those funds by the end of this school year, so this should be finished. We can then apply for any remaining funding, get all that money in to recoup some of our costs. Again, this was a one-time aid source, which is why the increase in our foundation aid was so important this year, is to continue this going forward. But some of the things we used the American Rescue Plan funding on was psychologist, social worker, guidance counselor supports, again, for identifying at-risk students, the same special education, academic support and classroom instruction to address learning loss, additional classroom NTA support for after-school activities and summer programs, also for some of our custodial costs and security earlier on in the pandemic to keep the buildings clean and secure. And again, we're going to expect this to be finished by the end of this current school year. So in summary, I just want to talk, some of the specific ways, like it's kind of very broad terms that we've kind of talked about, but some of the specifics that we've had was continuing classroom instruction during the quarantine, so providing that online instruction. If a student was home quarantined with COVID, they were still able to kind of sign into the class and be part of the class, feel like they were part of the class, and continue that instruction. We had provision of Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots for some of our students who were at risk, who may not have had Wi-Fi or access from home. We were able to get those students hotspots so that they could continue to continue their education, prevent additional learning loss. It helped to support our integrated co-teaching program that we did this year for elementary, again, to address learning loss, social worker, psychologists and guidance counselor supports, academic supports. Social worker psychologists and guidance counselor supports, academic supports and teaching assistance, before and after-school programs, homework helpers, TLC, wizards, all supported by this funding. I mentioned support for regions review, custodial support to clean the buildings and security staff to secure the buildings as well as HVAC and repairs. So I think, you know, we were, we got a lot of reimbursement for a lot of the expenses that we did incur throughout COVID. So we're very grateful for all of that support and we're grateful for the foundation aid increases bringing us whole, which really allows us to continue a lot of those supports that were put in place that we need to continue probably for the next several years because this is not something that's going to kind of dry up quickly as far as the concern about learning loss. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I might just say thank you for breaking down each of these different funding sources. That's helpful to know what, how they come in and what sort of strings are attached with each package. And certainly we want to use these sources of aid for programs that we know work, right? Not that we think might work. So can we speak to any of the after-school or before-school or the tutoring programs that we have in place now? And are there metrics in terms of attendance, participation, achievement that we, you know, we can be sure we're putting our money into the best possible spots?
We do take attendance and our teachers are working with them, with all of our students who attended very closely, one-on-one. And we are seeing improvements in their reading and their math and their writing. And overall, the most prominent improvement that we do see for our learners is their confidence. So by us working and supporting them in areas where they might be a little bit more limited at this moment in time, we're building up their confidence. And then when they're going back into the classroom, they're going in with a different zest for learning.
Thank you. And in terms of the HVAC upgrades, was it primarily repairs? Or were there any upgrades in terms of air exchanges?
It was primarily repairs. Early on, we did get certain room, I forget the term, room conditioners for internal spaces. So it helped purchase some of those.
Like the filters?
Yeah, air filters.
Purifiers.
For internal rooms where we didn't have windows that could be opened or didn't have adequate fresh air. So I did persist in purchasing some of those items.
Thank you. Now, this is focused mostly on the COVID funding that we got. I'm just curious, outside of that, are we getting anything from like safe schools or anything outside of this sort of funding? Do we get for school safety or grants that might be, we might be eligible for outside of this type of funding coming up for next year?
We were actually just talking about safe schools, how it's like sunsetted at this point.
Okay.
I know we used a lot of that money for camera upgrades and some of those different pieces. And we were, we were just having a discussion about whether or not they're going to do something again. So the first time when they came out with safe schools, I was a middle school principal and that was 2012.
Mm-hmm.
So that was the last time that that piece is done and it's kind of sunsetted now. So we're curious to see if something changes with that.
Okay.
In terms of like the, what Mr. Bartel said about the formula, there has been rumors since they started increasing the foundation aid all across New York State, there have been rumors that they're going to change the formula. I know it was a hot topic when I went up to the superintendent's conference. It was also a hot topic when we had our conversation with the legislature meeting as well, where most districts at this point, I would say 99.9% are asking for a hold harmless or save harmless so that if they do change the formula, the current levels will be kept where it is. Otherwise, the state is going to end up causing holes in multiple budgets all across the state. So I do believe, you know, in one of the workshops that I went to, that they're very aware of this. Two of the people that worked directly for constructing the state budget spoke to this. They were from the governor's office. The one thing to talk about in the strings attached in terms of the $350,000 for individual tutoring, that wasn't in the one-house budget. So the assembly didn't have that piece in there. So it's one of the things that we kind of have to see how this plays out during that, middle of that negotiation now. In meeting with our legislatures, they talked about that this was an issue in terms of the strings meeting three to eight, that if you're going to do work and allocate money towards improvement, it should be K-12.
Thank you.
Thanks. I mean, we were at the legislative meeting, so the whole harmless advocating for that is very important because if we get it, then, you know, going forward, we won't have those holes. But we have no way of guaranteeing that we're going to get it.
There's absolutely no way to guarantee what the state's going to do a year or two years from now. I know that there's no like active committee that they brought together to change the formula. That doesn't mean that can't be won by the end of this budget negotiation. But I would, I would be remiss to try to predict what the state's going to do in any, in any way, shape or form.
I just had some clarifying questions from my own understanding. So foundation aid, we've received three consecutive times, this being the third and final time we're receiving it. The monies that we received from it though, we anticipate that we should always now receive this much money.
Correct.
So it's kind of increased our aid.
Correct.
And we're hoping that there's going to be no change in the formula that might decrease that aid.
Correct, correct.
So do we have a contingency plan in place should something like that happens? Like how do we plan for the unpredictability of what could happen to ensure that we're on stable financial ground?
Well, there's a number of different ways. If they decide to take away $3 million, that's very difficult to kind of plan for. And almost in any school budget across, and we're lucky that our increase was $3 million. But like some of our neighbors, the increase was $20 million. So how do you, how do you plan for a hole in the budget of $3 to $20 million? So we've, we've talked about a number of different ways that we can do that. But mostly, it's really about talking to the legislatures and making people understand what the issue is that if they change this formula. One of the things I think that Robert did very well was as the formula dried, excuse me, as the money dried up from COVID funds and from some of the federal funds, we were fortunate enough to have the state fund and foundation aid increase so that we weren't, we didn't have to decrease any of our programs. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I think I'm just kind of looking more towards the future with like the uncertainty of knowing what the funding could potentially be and how many of our programs are now vested in this funding, obviously not wanting to lose any of those programs because they are needed for our students and our learners. So I think just thinking about, and again, I don't know that there's even an answer to this question, but...
To be honest, there probably isn't a clear one right now.
Yeah, I'm just kind of being mindful of until we have more certainty of, you know, what our expenditures and stuff are. So, but thank you very much. It was a very informative presentation.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for action one through five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss negotiations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting will be April 4th and that's Public Works. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.